One, two, three. Two, one. I have to stay. I'm waiting for this. I'm waiting for this.
What do you say? Make everyone be quiet?
Yes, I do.
Here we go. Please rise for the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance.
Chief, permission to post colors?
Post colors.
Color guard, post colors!
Color guard, forward march. Post colors. Ready, face. Present arms.
Uniform personnel, present arms!
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms!
Color guard, order, arms. Ready, face. Forward, march.
Please be seated. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of February 18th. I am Joe Gothelz, your mayor, and looking around the room, we have quite a few important people. I am not even going to try to name all of them because I see so many of our chiefs from San Mateo County and so many of our San Mateo's finest. So, thank you all for being here. I will acknowledge, however, my boss, the district attorney, Steve Wagstaff, and our elected sheriff, Carlos Bolanos, thank you for being here and thank you to your whole staff. I'm going to ask our new chief, Ed Barberini, to meet me at the microphone right up here.
Please raise your right hand.
Aye, Ed Barberini.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
I'm now going to invite up Ed's dad, Ed Barberini, to do the badge pinning.
Don't hurt me.
I said you were little. I said you should probably ask your wife if she wants to do it, but you said she got to do the last one, right?
Yeah, I can't hold on.
And I'm sorry, we're a little rusty. We haven't done one of these in a long time. Would you like to speak?
Sure, thank you, sir. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Thank you very much for allowing this intrusion into your busy agenda this evening. I very much appreciate it. I'd especially like to thank city manager Corbett, the department heads, all staff, and the San Mateo community for their very warm welcome to the San Mateo family. It means a lot. I'm very happy to have my family with me here tonight, my wife Jackie, you met my dad, my mom Sue's here, as well as several other family members. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate that. Not only did my parents work hard to instill a strong work ethic and emphasis on always doing the right thing, they've always been very supportive in anything I've sought to achieve and I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything you've done for me. So, thank you. There are so many people here that have helped me over the years. I'm going to refrain from naming them all, just as the mayor did earlier. Please know that I will always be thankful for your advice and support. Every one of you has played a significant role in me standing before you this evening. I'd like to thank the men and the women of the sheriff's office for providing me with the foundation necessary to do some pretty interesting things during the course of my career. More importantly, I'm grateful for the continued relationships and friendships that make me a better person every day. Thank you to the senior leadership team for the city of San Bruno. I've learned an incredible amount from each of you and I'm lucky to have worked with all of you and I'm a much better person for it. I'm really at a loss to express my affection and appreciation for the men and women of the San Bruno Police Department. I'm humbled to have been a member of the San Bruno Police Department and it'll always have a special place in my heart. It's no secret that the police chiefs within the county have played a tremendous role in preparing me for this opportunity. The manner in which we eagerly collaborate with one another has helped me tremendously. This is especially true of Chief Manheimer, who not only left a strong, capable department, but continually makes herself available to me for questions and advice. There are a couple of special people that have truly made significant sacrifices on my behalf and are the reason why I'm here today. The first is my daughter Sophia, who could not be here tonight. Whether it was calls in the middle of the night or rescheduling birthdays and holidays, she's put up with a lot and I love her for it. The second is my wife Jackie. Without Jackie, none of this would have been possible. She keeps me in line and straightens me out when necessary. Thanks, Jack. To those who reside, work, and frequent the city of San Mateo, I can't tell you how honored I am to serve you. The demands and challenges facing law enforcement continually evolve. Addressing ever-changing needs within our communities will require a great deal of cooperation and innovation and I recognize that neither the city or any of its departments can succeed independently and I look forward to partnering with each of you as we move forward together. Finally, to the men and women of the San Mateo Police Department. All of this is not really about me, but about us. I'm honored and proud to work side by side with you to provide the highest level of law enforcement services to the fine people of San Mateo. The talent and capacity of those that wear the San Mateo Police Department patch is incredible. I could not be more encouraged to continue to work with each of you to serve our communities in the dedicated and compassionate manner that the San Mateo Police Department always has. If the class and professionalism you've displayed over the last couple of weeks is any indication, there's no doubt that the department will continue to excel and achieve tremendous things for this city. Thank you all again very much. I'm honored and flattered that you all took the time out of your busy schedules for being here tonight for this occasion, which is not as momentous as it needs to be, but thank you very much.
Chief Barberini, you are very fortunate to be here. San Mateo's a great place and there's a tremendous amount of goodwill for our law enforcement community. As I look around, this is a special place. San Mateo's finest and San Mateo's bravest have shown up to welcome you to San Mateo. I also see the entire law enforcement community of San Mateo County coming out here to support you. So, Ed has promised me that he's going to write a personal thank you card to each and every one of you. But, thank you very much and we got the right person for the job. Thank you, Ed. I'm going to ask all of you to bear with me for the next acknowledgement, which is extremely important to me. It is rare that you have a civil servant who serves for such a long period of time and has such an impact on a community as Ron Munocaw. Ron, your dedication and service to us as a city has been decades, right? More than just a few decades.
Start with ten.
And I want to read this resolution in your honor for all the ways in which you have positively impacted the city of San Mateo. Resolution number C1, 2020, commending Chief Planner Ronald Munocaw for his 40 years of service with the city of San Mateo, February 1980 to February 2020. Resolved by the City Council of the city of San Mateo, California, that Ronald Ron Munocaw has served the citizens of San Mateo since February 1980, beginning as an assistant planner, moving up to chief of planner in 2001, leading the operations of the planning division, including current and long-range planning, to make up 40 years of extraordinary service to the city. Whereas Ron has been instrumental in helping the city council, planning commission, and general plan subcommittee in their discussions of planning, land use, environmental and economic development, and circulation issues that affect the city of San Mateo, its residents, nonprofits, and businesses. And over his tenure, he has had his hand in all of the last three general plans and four downtown plans. And whereas with Ron's leadership, hundreds of projects were completed, including the Peninsula Region, Sunrise Assisted Living, Drager Supermarket, Century Downtown, Century Downtown Cinema, and Main Street Parking Garage, Downtown Transit Center, and the renovation of the historic downtown fire station. And whereas Ron worked on some of the region's most notable transit-oriented development projects, such as the city of San Mateo Rail Corridor Plan and the Bay Meadows Specific Plan, additionally, Ron's other projects include Station Park Green, the new main library, Hillsdale Shopping Center renovation, Clearview Offices, the GoPro Headquarters, Concorr Offices, which is where Rocketon currently resides, the Marriott Hotels, several housing element updates, the city's housing and land use study, and the most recent update of the downtown plan. And whereas Ron has a remarkable ability to mentor both staff and planning commissioners to be effective in their roles, he guides staff in being ready to take on the next steps in their career. He has distinguished himself as a hard-working and dedicated public servant and is always committed to helping this community by his clear-sighted administering of planning regulations with a sense of fairness, drawing on his keen understanding of planning law to provide invaluable leadership and guidance on many significant projects. And whereas his staff know him as a steady, dependable coworker and friend who takes pride in his work and in this community, he is always ready to lend moral support or a helping hand when needed. And whereas he is known for his clear and succinct presentations, coupled with his deep knowledge of San Mateo, resulting in an ability to explain complex planning matters and issues so that everyone can understand, he is the go-to guy. And whereas Ron availed himself of the city of San Mateo park and rec classes, first taking a dance class as background for his extracurricular work with marching bands and drum corps, many classes later, Ron found himself onstage in local musicals and he continues to appear in shows throughout the Bay Area, most recently as an emcee. And whereas his retirement on February 22nd, 2020 will leave behind a legacy of diligence, hard work, and deep knowledge gained during his years as chief of planning and his contributions to this city and community will be deeply missed. And now, therefore, this council does hereby confer upon Chief Planner Ronald Munocaw its highest commendation for the manner in which he has performed his duties, his extraordinary leadership, and for having been a difference-maker in this community. He has earned the right to enjoy his time pursuing his passions and creative endeavors with this community's deep appreciation for his genuine giving spirit and committed service. Adopted this 18th day of February 2020. Congratulations, Ron Munocaw. Ron, would you take a picture?
Come on.
Let me get out so that I can...
Can I say something?
Yes.
Can I just add something before Ron speaks?
I, well, sure.
I just want to say that as a new council member...
We should make Ron stand right there, though, and listen.
Yeah. As a new council member, I learned the magic of Ron Munocaw and it was be as direct as you can possibly be with the public, Diane, and you will get it across and without a whole lot of hullabaloo. So, you set such an example for me very early on when I was elected and constituent came with an issue and I so appreciated your directness and I think that this city has benefited 110% from not only the job that you did, but how you did it. And I really appreciate just as direct as you were. Thank you to the Munocaw family for sharing Ron with us for so many years. It's been awesome.
Yeah, few people get to see their impact on a city as significantly as you did.
Ron, it was an absolute pleasure serving on the planning commission with you leading the way. I was, this past weekend, I was out of town on kind of a mini road trip and I was thinking about, you know, what do I want to say for somebody whom I respect so highly, who I think has contributed so much to the quality of life here in San Mateo? And here's what I came up with, the three attributes that really come to mind when I think of you, how you conducted yourself, and your contributions. So, the first, as council member Papin kind of alluded to, cool, calm, and collective. I mean, no matter how high the heat was turned up, you never lost your cool. You were always the same, like your face was the same. You didn't know if you're upset, happy, sad. It was just, and I think the public really appreciated that because sometimes you're in a very difficult position and you need to be impartial and you played that part to a T. The consummate professional, always prepared, always had done your homework. I never saw you mishandle the question. Maybe you did, but I didn't see it. And you're just so thoughtful and if you didn't know the answer, you didn't try to BS it. You didn't try to say, you just said, you know what, let me get back to you and then you never heard about it again because I'm sure you got back to them and you did the research. And lastly, I mean, this kind of comes from the longevity, but it's just a living encyclopedia of the history of San Mateo. You just have such a wealth of knowledge and you're going to be sorely missed. And, you know, some people, when they contribute so much to a job, you really wonder like, what are they going to do when they retire? But something tells me you're going to do just fine and enjoy retirement. Well deserved. Thank you so much for your service, Ron.
I could just say, I think I've known Ron since sometime in the late 90s and Ron was always the consummate professional. And Ron is truly, you said it, he's encyclopedic, conducts himself with the utmost professionalism. Nobody knows how we got to be who we are and what we are like Ron. Ron has always dealt fairly with every issue, even though he and I may have disagreed for a little while on something. I was always able to go and talk with him and we worked it out somehow. I usually figured out Ron was right.
When you say usually, you mean every time.
Okay, well, I don't like to speak in absolutes. But thank you, Ron, for your many, many years of service and dedication. Can't thank you enough.
Ron, I got to know you best through all the times that you attended meetings in our neighborhood association. And I have to say that, you know, being the face of planning, which is not an easy thing, you showed up every single time and you really held ground with so much clarity and fairness and I don't think there was ever a time where the community didn't feel respected. And to show the community respect with your level of professionalism and your listening and your steadiness, it's reassuring in the face of so many times where there's concern and fear and resistance. And so, I've seen you in action and I'm so grateful for all the times that you showed up and you listened and I think we've learned a lot from you and it's hard to imagine, it's hard to imagine going forward without you, honestly.
So, there is a wall of people who have given 40 years of their life to this city. And one fun fact is that Ron will immediately become the youngest-looking person on the wall. No one is going to believe that you actually gave 40 years of service. But, one other thing, for any young planner out there, and I think you should continue to have this relationship mentoring young planners, if you took them around the city of San Mateo, it would open their eyes to, oh my goodness, this is why I want to be a city planner because if you can affect this kind of change and have this much of a positive impact on your community, that's what I want to do. I think you can inspire, continue to inspire, city planners to step up and have that kind of impact on their city. Thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you for your generous words this evening. First of all, as you know, my brother Mark, my sister Gail, my sister Naomi, and my mom are here, so certainly they've supported me not only in the work with the city of San Mateo, but any activity that I partake of and I feel very fortunate that we have a very close family. And speaking of family, the members of the planning staff here, Ryan, Julia, Mary, Rendell, I'll get to Kohar in a minute, and Rodrigo Orduna, who is the new planning manager. He's a great fit for San Mateo, very knowledgeable, and I think the city is going to be very well-served. And he's already hit the ground running. You know, the one thing I feel good about in stepping away is that I think the leadership team withdrew with Kohar and thank you, Kohar, for arranging this. It was very, very nice of you. I think the leadership is poised and I also would like to thank the city council. You know, it's interesting that AMO mentioned the word "respect" because those are the two words that are on either side. And I also told this to the planning commission, as a staff member, the one thing that I've always appreciated, the thing that the staff has always appreciated, is the respect you show for each other, for the public, and for the staff. And like Rick said, there were times when we did not agree, but it was never, you're wrong. It was more, I understand the staff's analysis. I understand your recommendation, but I must disagree and here's why. And as city council members, that's, as you know better than I, that's your responsibility. But that's the one thing that we've always appreciated and will continue to appreciate is the respect that's shown by the council and basically everyone who's up on the dais that we work with. So, speaking like a member of the public, I know it's getting late, so. I would just say, I do see the projects here that are on the resolution. However, those projects only happen because of not only the staff that's here, but the various people that I've had the opportunity to work with over my entire career with the city of San Mateo. So, I think the one thing that the projects that are mentioned here is not necessarily a reflection of success on me, but it's the success of San Mateo as an organization, both from the legislative body to the appointed bodies to the staff. These things that get accomplished with the public, with the council, with the staff. And I think it's more notable that through the city, all these things have been accomplished and I think with the leadership that's in place, with the staff that's in place, San Mateo is well-poised for both the challenges and the opportunities that are going to be coming up in the next several years because I'm sure there's going to be plenty. So, again, thank you very much. This is very gracious. Again, thank you, Kohar, for setting this up and I really do appreciate it. I appreciate everything the city of San Mateo has done for me. So, thank you.
Ron, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, as a resolution that will require an action of the council?
I move approval of the resolution.
I'll second. Second, go.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just kidding. That passes unanimously.
Don't be a stranger.
We have two more proclamations because the mayor is ambitious this year. I would like to read this next proclamation, which is to the centennial of the 19th Amendment. Women's suffrage, has it only been 100 years, it feels like?
Because it's had such a significant impact!
I...
It feels like a thousand!
You got it.
Yes, I cannot imagine, only men, that's insane. If I could read this proclamation in honor of the 100 years of the 19th Amendment. Whereas the year 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of the ratification and signing of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which granted women the right to vote. And whereas this year, the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County joins more than 700 other local and state chapters to celebrate this historic milestone. And whereas on February 14th, 1920, the League of Women Voters was founded by Carrie Chapman Cat to prepare for the implementation of the 19th Amendment. And within five years, the League of Women Voters educated millions of women in civic engagement and the American political system. And whereas League members across North and Central San Mateo County carry on this tradition and continue to recruit members and activists who share the League's commitment to making democracy work. And whereas the League's historic commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters is not only stronger, but more effective than ever utilizing such tools as vote411.org, a cutting-edge election information website utilized by millions of voters each election cycle. And whereas empowering every eligible citizen across the country is vital to making changes in our political system as we strive to build a better nation. And whereas regardless of gender, race, religion, or party affiliation, all American citizens deserve to be an active and informed participant in deciding our nation's future. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city council of San Mateo hereby celebrates the centennial of the 19th Amendment, Votes for Women. the centennial of the 19th Amendment Votes for Women, dated February 18, 2020. Joe Gothel's mayor. Thank you so much. Let me present this to you and then I'll give you a chance.
All right. Now I want you to read it in Spanish.
Okay.
And I'll translate.
Well, council members and mayor and staff, particularly staff who have worked on this. My name is Martha Buckbinder. I am the president of the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County. And I thank you very much for having this proclamation on our behalf. It is just an incredible historic moment for women at this, this year, because not only are we 100 years into the suffrage, the right to vote for us, but we also celebrate that women prepare to implement an amendment before it was actually put into law, signed into law, six months before. So, you know, it's easy, because for us women, we prepare. If we're going to cook, we have to have prepared ingredients. We're going to sew, we have to have great clothing material. So we were automatically ready six months before to get going. It is an achievement. But now we are facing another big hurdle that is going to be another 100 years, hopefully not. And that is the ERA, Equal Rights Amendment, which right now has gone on to the Senate for final acceptance. But anyway, regardless of that, it is a pleasure to ask you to be part of this. The League of Women Voters really is significant in the work that you're doing. Because at some point in time, we probably were able to facilitate some civil discourse, candidate forums, pros and cons, all of the things that you have to be involved in when you are an elected official. I have been an elected official for 12 years, served a long time ago, not 100 years ago for sure, but a long time ago. And so I appreciated when I first met the League and found out that there was a way that I could actually express what I wanted to say. And I didn't know for the first time, what am I doing here? And the League put the boundaries for safety, for expression. So thank you very much. This really means a lot to us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Maybe we should get unanimous support for the Equal Rights Amendment later on in, anyway.
Okay, I second.
Yes, third. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, if I skipped over calling role, we are all present. The record should reflect that we're all here. So we can stipulate. And lastly, I want to acknowledge that this is Black History Month. And I have a proclamation, so I would welcome forward any representatives from our community who are representing us. Come on forward, Alexis. Thank you so much. And who else did you bring today?
I brought Jose Mendez and Catherine Haysford with me.
Welcome to all of you. Thank you so much. I have this proclamation celebrating Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month, also known as African American History Month, has been nationally observed in the United States every February since 1976. And whereas the theme of this year's Black History Month is African Americans and the Vote, honoring the centennial anniversary of the 19th Amendment, 1920, granting women's suffrage, and the sesquicentennial of the 15th Amendment, 1870, giving black men the right to vote. And whereas this month, the nation celebrates the important contribution of black suffragists within the women's movement and the black voting rights movement. As through voting rights campaigns and legal suits, African Americans made their voices heard as to the importance of voting. And whereas across the nation, organizations are working to eliminate racial prejudice and supporting efforts to remove all barriers of racial discrimination through democratic processes. And whereas locally, the San Mateo NAACP branch is working to promote programs that support voter education, prison reform, youth advocacy, and other projects to further equal opportunities for the African American community. Now therefore, I, Joe Gothel's, mayor of the city of San Mateo, on behalf of myself and on behalf of the City Council of San Mateo, do hereby recognize the month of February 2020 as Black History Month and hereby further acknowledge the important work the San Mateo NAACP branch does on behalf of all of our citizens. We express our sincere appreciation to this organization for its numerous achievements and contributions to our community. Joe Gothel's mayor, signed February 18, 2020.
I had to write this down so I wouldn't forget anything. On behalf of our President, Reverend Lori Owens, and the other members of the San Mateo branch of the NAACP, I'd like to thank the city council for recognizing us tonight. The NAACP is the oldest civil rights organization in America. And on February 12, we celebrated its 100th anniversary. The San Mateo branch of the NAACP would like to invite all of you to our annual banquet on Sunday, March 29, at 4:00 p.m. at the Crown Plaza Hotel in Foster City. Our guest speaker is Santa Clara Judge, County Judge, Charles Wilson, and our esteemed Congresswoman, Jackie Speer. So I'd love to see all of you there.
I will be there. I will see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to say something?
Please.
Please, please.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And join us. This is a great organization, the oldest civil rights organization we have. And we've been doing great work and we will continue. We make this a better country, a better society, if we treat everybody equally, chances for everyone, no pressure, all that kind. So you know what I'm talking about. We beat every force usually. So if you have people who wanted to join us, bring them over and they will be welcome. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I just wanted to say thank you so much. It just shows the warmth, love, and enthusiasm of the city for us all to come together and have good community relations. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. How many more ceremonial? No, just kidding. Madam Clerk, would you read the consent calendar, please?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number five, city council meeting minutes approval as amended on the dais. Item number six, one transit center lease amendment. Item number seven, 391st Avenue, lease amendment. Item number eight, jobs specification updates, Department of Public Works, Park and Recreation, Information Technology, and the police. Item number nine, investment advisory services and agreement. And item number 10 is being pulled off of this agenda, will not be considered tonight, but will be brought forward at a future meeting.
Okay. With that, is there any member of the council who would like to pull another item from the consent calendar? Any member of the public wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. So move to approve? I have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent calendar passes unanimously. Now is the time for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to comment on an item that is not appearing on our agenda may address the city council at this time. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak at this time on an, on an item that is not on the agenda? Public comment's going to be limited to a total of 15 minutes, three minutes per speaker. And at this time, we have two speaker slips, please. Three speaker slips.
Denise Bobel. Hi, my name's Denise Bobel. And I came here tonight to speak on agenda item number 10 that got withdrawn. I was very disappointed to hear that was withdrawn, because I think staff did an excellent job on the recommendation. I'm coming at it from a different viewpoint, and I'm hoping that you're open to this. But racing horses is very controversial. I don't know, we don't care about it a lot up here in Northern California, but in Southern California, it's a big topic, because so many racehorses are dying because of the maltreatment that they receive being forced to race. And so I wanted to come here and congratulate the city of San Mateo for ending the subsidizing of this very brutal industry. And I understand that previously, when it was profitable, San Mateo was profiting off of this industry. So I would encourage you, no matter what the event center comes and tells you, that San Mateo should do the ethically correct thing and should disassociate from either subsidizing or profiting from this industry that has a notorious reputation of causing harm to the horses. I don't know if you know what happens to horses, but they start racing them and training them at 18 months of age. Horses do not fully develop until about five or six years of age. So these animals are being forced to go into this intensive training, and they are given all sorts of drugs to keep them racing even when their bodies are hurting. We have high number of deaths at the racetracks from Golden Gate Fields. I mean, we don't even hear about when they die. It just goes unnoticed. And we're trying to bring some awareness to this. So I'm not going to go on and on. I'll be back. I hope staff does not withdraw this recommendation. It's sound, not only from a financial point of view, but from an ethical point of view. I hope you all consider that. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Drew.
Hi, my name's Pat Covielo, and I just want to echo the sentiments of the previous speaker. As the years go on, our human spirit progresses. And that's clearly apparent in California right now. We have all kinds of animal issues that have come up here. We've had circuses with exotic animals are banned in California. And things that were acceptable previously are no longer acceptable. We have, the selling of fur is going to be banned pretty soon. Same with horse racing. Horse racing has always been brutal. Horses have always died. But now, as people are getting more aware of it and more compassionate towards other animals, we now find this unacceptable, that all these horses are dying for entertainment like this. And I just want to say that if the jockey club wants to, the services of the city, they should pay for them like any other private industry. The city shouldn't have an agreement where they get a percentage of this, what I consider blood money. They just, it's simple. They can just pay for it like any other private industry. You say, you know, we need the services of the city, and what's it cost? And here it is. But the city, I don't think, I think it's a black eye in the city to have an agreement where they get a percentage to, from the jockey club to provide the services. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. And now Drew. Drew, you only need one speaker slip. It's okay.
Check with the boss at the desk here. But thank you, Mayor. So I want to build on a little bit. I addressed in the special, the special meeting. You know, we talked a lot about transparency at Caltrain and just kind of what's happened in San Mateo. So in that vein, I think there is an issue that we need to get back to Caltrain and push back hard on. And it is on the Hillsdale Station. They just completed land use study along the entire right of way to identify extra property. And part of that classification was the core for the tracks and station right of way. And then they had everything else. And on Hillsdale, the parking lots on the west side of the station, south of 31st, they didn't classify those as station property. Every other station, at least when I looked at those maps, is station property. When I've asked about this, it's kind of, well, we think they're going to be extra. And to a fault. And usually, when I talk to Caltrain staff, they're direct, and I've had reasonable conversations. But this one, something's going on. Because on the surface, when I look at like Belmont with all their parking, all that's classified as station parking, all these other stations. And we, as a city, should get that. It's just a map classification. That's what I don't get. To me, it could be, quote, an error, just fix it. But somehow, it can't just get fixed. Because, you know, it might be different if we didn't have the business plan that was going to wipe out all the parking on the east side. But that's the plan. That's supposed to happen. Those two parking lots on the west side, they're even going to get used when the new station opens. People from Belmont and people from South San Mateo are going to use those parking lots. Why? Because you have to otherwise do a bunch of right turns in and out of the new lots. They're not terrible lots, but it's like, I can't get a straight answer from Cal. I can't get the maps updated. And when I've gone into this, you know, I hear transparency. I hear stuff from them. This is one, it should just be easy to get fixed. Just update the map. Because how I view it is, and I, to a fault, I can't believe it's true, is someone's getting paid off somewhere along the line to misclassify that map, so it's easier to sell the land to developers later and stuff. Like, oh, it's excess because it's not station and stuff. And that's the problem I have. If later it wants to be sold, that's fine. Let's classify it correctly to begin with. So I think that's something as a city can go back and say, hey, let's get this mapped correctly, aligned to everything else in the corridor and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. I hear what you're smelling. Is there any other public comment at this time? If there isn't, then I'm closing the public comment period. Thank you all for coming, even for items not on the agenda. With that, I'm going to move on to item number 10 is not. 10 has been pulled, so that will be on a future agenda. I will move on to item number 11, which is new business. And I will invite up Sue Ellen Atkinson. Yes?
The parking in Lufy is still on.
I'm sorry.
I apologize for that.
So is it possible?
When we added the item at the last minute, we renumbered it.
I see. So I will call it item number 11, right?
Yes.
Previously known as 11?
Item.
Previously known as Dan.
Let's continue calling it item number 11, which is the parking in Lufy, right? It was noticed as item 11. It remains item 11. And please, give us your presentation.
On my printout is item 11. Hi, Mayor Gothel's city council member, Sue Ellen Atkinson, principal transportation planner with Public Works, and here tonight with the parking in Lufy fee structure update. So a brief overview of the staff presentation this evening. We'll go through the prior council direction from November 2019, discuss parking in Lufy impacts for change of use projects, go through some potential actions, and then discuss next steps. So when staff was here in November 2019, city council direction supported increasing the parking in Lufy to $50,000 per space. City council also supported a charge of one third of that full fee for projects that were classified as change of use. And these fees are available for projects within the Central Parking Improvement District to pay in lieu of providing the required amount of parking on site. However, after the November 2019 meeting, when we were working through implementation, it was determined that the parking in Lufy constitutes an impact fee under the Mitigation Fee Act. So based on that, all projects must pay their share of impacts fees under the Mitigation Fee Act. And further, fees must be the same for all projects under this act. So based on that description, we are not able to institute a fee structure where new development pays a full fee and then change of use projects pay a portion of that fee. So staff delved in a little bit further to figure out how we could reach the city council's goal of reducing the impact on these projects that are classified as change of use. So here we see the full downtown area and various parking zones within the downtown. And I've broken it out to make it a little more clear. So this orange area is the full Central Parking Improvement District. That's the larger district within the downtown. A project within this area may opt or request to pay the parking in Lufy instead of providing all required parking on site. So in the city of San Mateo, this topic of parking in Lufy only affects projects within this area. It's not available to projects outside of that area. Within that area is Within that area is a smaller area designated as the primary benefit zone. And I'll talk about that on the next slide. So historically, within the Central Parking Improvement District, that larger area, there were bonds that were issued in the 1950s to fund the construction of public parking structures. So that's some of our older garages that are in the downtown. All properties within the CPID were charged a minimum uniform amount to help repay those bonds. The smaller area called the primary benefit zone was created in the late 1980s to fund construction of downtown parking. So that zone was established as an assessment district to repay the bonds as well. Properties within the primary benefit zone were charged an additional parking deficiency assessment. So they paid that minimum uniform charge and they paid an additional parking assessment. Through payment of that parking assessment over the course of 20 some odd years, properties within the primary benefit zone are estimated to have contributed funds to account for approximately 10 parking spaces, which is noted as a credit through our city zoning code. So the way that this is applied in practice for change of use projects is that the parking requirements are calculated based on our zoning code and the parking requirements for each type of use. So a parking ratio based on square footage or number of units. If there are more than 10 net new spaces, so between existing use and then the new use, if there's more than 10 net spaces, if that answer is yes, then they would be paying the parking in lieu fee for the amount in excess of 10 spaces. If that net new parking space calculation is less than 10, then there's a credit applied and those projects do not pay a fee under this current zoning code provision. Further, we do need to consider that the bonds were paid off in 2004. And also areas designated as assessment districts have provisions under the Mitigation Fee Act, which may no longer apply if that district is no longer valid. So in consideration of all of that, we've brought forward a recommendation at this point to maintain the status quo based on our current zoning code with the 10 parking space credit for change of use projects. Staff recommends conducting a parking in lieu fee and NEXIS study to evaluate the amount of parking space credit and projects and parcels that will receive that credit. The 10 space credit is currently extended to change of use projects only. And that study will evaluate if that's appropriate and how many spaces were essentially paid for through that assessment. Further, following that study, staff would update the relevant section of the zoning code to be in compliance with those findings now that the assessment district is no longer. Additionally, through public comment for prior items on this topic, we've heard feedback that the parking requirements in the downtown are too high from some that have submitted public comment. Note that parking requirements are lower within the CPID than in other areas of the city. If council so directs, staff could conduct a survey or study to evaluate options or updates to the parking requirements in the downtown. And further, to evaluate the parking demand for change of use projects to determine if there's a difference in type of project and parking demand. Additional public comment noted other jurisdictions that allow for a reduction in parking requirement based on transportation demand management measures that are implemented by projects. If city council desires, staff could explore possible requirements based on the provision of those transportation demand management measures that reduce single occupancy vehicle trips. However, offering a parking reduction for implementing these measures would require ongoing monitoring of the implementation and effectiveness of these measures in any given project. So in terms of next steps, if city council directs, staff will bring an increased parking in lieu fee of $50,000 to city council through public hearing. That is currently scheduled for March 2nd. It would apply to all projects within the CPID, including new development and including change of use. However, based on evaluation of change of use projects over the last few years, we do not expect significant fiscal impact for change of use projects under this current zoning code provision. And pending direction from council on the potential actions discussed tonight, any movement forward on those items would be included in staff work plans to bring forward. So this is an informational item for tonight and staff requests discussion and feedback on conducting a fee and NEXIS study for potential updates to the zoning code with regard to the parking in lieu fee. Direction regarding conducting a parking study to evaluate demand for conversion to a different use and further for parking requirements in the downtown area. And council direction on exploring potential parking reduction for implementation of TDM measures. That concludes the staff presentation and I'm available for comments.
Thank you so much. Would you go back to that last slide? Perfect. Questions from the council? Diane?
Yeah, thank you. I've got a couple of questions and thanks for keeping that slide up. Because it's a little unclear to me on the history. I understand where we are now and that is, since we paid off the bonds, it's been, you get your 10, if you don't net 10 new spaces, you don't pay a fee, right? But before that, you had to pay something, even if you were a change of use, because we had the bonds to pay off.
At that point, there was an annual assessment that everyone paid regardless if they were doing a project or not. There was the minimum uniform charge and there was the additional assessment within the smaller area.
That you, was part of your property tax or something? Or how did you assess it? Part of the property tax? Okay. So, and now it is in the Central Improvement District, do I have that phrase right? Central Parking Improvement District. It's no net 10 new spaces, don't pay a fee.
Only within that smaller primary benefit zone area. The smaller blue area, yes.
Oh, I'm glad I asked. Okay, but outside of that?
Outside of that, the 10 space credit does not apply.
So March 2nd, it would be $50,000 if you're in that zone, but outside the special zone?
Right.
Right? Okay. All right. And then one more question if I may. You indicated that thus far, there really, when there's a, we haven't had much change of use that triggers over 10 new net spaces, right?
Correct. When looking back, staff recollected one project recently.
And, but you're asking us to study that anyway? Or are you asking for a broader study?
What we are looking to do is to do a fee and NEXIS study that would update the zoning code because those provisions within the zoning code are outdated with the retirement of the bonds and the assessment district no longer being valid.
But it still is that if you're in that zone, you get that special, no net 10 new spaces exemption?
And the study would evaluate over the term of paying those assessments, essentially how many parking spaces were paid for by those parcels to evaluate if the 10 space credit is correct, if it's more, if it's less, and who it applies to.
I see. So if you get the parking fee, is it covering whatever's added by a change of use?
Correct.
Is that what you're worried about?
And the reference to the assessment district would no longer be in the zoning code and so it would be accurate to the time that we're at now.
I see. Okay. Thanks.
Good questions. Now it all makes sense.
I'm curious more about the timeline of the decision to increase the fee potentially in March and then also do the fee and NEXIS study. So how do those two timelines overlap? Can you explain more about how they play out? And would it then be coming back to us at a later date with, so can you?
Prior to the November 2019 council items, staff conducted a fee study for the amount of the parking in lieu fee, based on construction costs, based on municipal parking garage costs, based on what other jurisdictions are charging within the Bay Area. So that's that per space fee. The fee and NEXIS study, in order to update the zoning code, is not focused on the amount of the parking in lieu fee. It's perhaps, calling it a fee and NEXIS study is not the best option because it's confusing. It would be looking at that section of the zoning code and how it would need to be updated to properly reflect the amount paid in assessments, the amount of parking credits essentially paid for, if you will, over the term of paying those assessments and what the language in the zoning code would need to be at present. So it would not be redoing the calculations to figure out the cost of the parking in lieu fee. It's more the application within the zoning code that governs how that is applied in projects.
Okay. And then, and then you're proposing to also add in the NEXIS study the potential parking reduction for TDM measures or is that, is that separate from the NEXIS study?
That is a separate question for council. If council desires to look into potential parking reduction, so that would be if projects are providing certain transportation demand management measures to reduce trips, do they qualify for any sort of reduction in parking? In some cities, it's a percentage that's reduced based on what type of measures are offered. And that could be done at the same time and potentially by the same contractor, but it's not necessarily one and the same.
So I understand the official recommendation is to receive an update, but what, in terms of, in terms of like the fee and NEXIS study and some of these other things, the staff have a position on, you know, is it recommended that we do this? I mean, would it?
Yes, I would, I would recommend that we, that we move forward with these, these studies because the zoning code is currently outdated based on the fact that we've paid off the bonds, don't have the assessments. So we need to take a look at our parking requirements.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what it seemed like and I was just curious.
Yes. Thank you.
And in terms of the TDM measures, so, I mean, I think that, at least for me, the real question is if they work, it makes sense, but then you have to, one, predict, make an accurate prediction of what will, would work and then monitor it. When you're looking at these potential parking reduction for TDM measures, have other cities been able to like monitor it and enforce it? And how did that, how did that work?
That is a good question. The monitoring is the onerous part and in many cases, it's self-reported, so the accuracy of what you're getting may be questionable. I have seen in other cities where it is not monitored and there's a parking reduction that's given for implementing TDM measures, but there hasn't been monitoring. And that monitoring is the key factor to ensure that those programs are being offered and that the trip reduction is actually being seen. We would have to look further to talk to colleagues about how the monitoring has been implemented successfully, but I can acknowledge that that is the hardest and the most important part of that.
And has there any been, has there ever been examples of making part of the fee paying for ongoing monitoring so that the city's not on the hook to constantly be paying for the ongoing monitoring in perpetuity?
Part of the parking in lieu fee?
Well, just part of the whole, you know, I'm assuming that, well, it could be zero, it could be not, not having to pay for any parking or it can be a fraction of it, something of, just making sure that, I mean, my, this is getting a little bit more into discussion, but I'm thinking that, you know, they shouldn't have to be paying for parking spaces that aren't needed, but making sure that they aren't needed is a significant cost, so I want to make sure that the fees would be covering that monitoring cost as well.
There are some jurisdictions that charge a TDM monitoring fee. San Carlos comes to mind and I think that that's a flat fee that's drawn down, but that is meant to cover the annual monitoring fee in terms of staff cost.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi. Thank you. Couple of questions. First, I'd like to talk about what Eric was just mentioning in terms of the ability to monitor, because monitoring is important. And having taken part in a few of the Bay Meadows TMA meetings, where I see that the members of the TMA actually pay a fee, which then supports the monitoring. So I think that it is possible for us to, if we have an established TMA, then charge a fee, right? And it's not a tax or something else, but whatever these owners in the Bay Meadows and even up in the transit corridor area are paying, which supports that function, I think we should look at, at forming that kind of an association for downtown, which supports itself and does its own, well, pays for the monitoring at least, right? So that's just one thing I'm thinking about. Is there some reason why we couldn't do that?
I don't think that there's a reason that we can't do that. The way that the rail corridor TMA is set up in terms of doing the annual report together is one option. Having projects submit mode split survey results that are done through a survey that the city prepares is another option. I think that there are a number of ways to go about annual monitoring.
Okay. Well, because.
Through the mayor, if I may. The, I would think we could also condition the project that they would pay an annual fee for, for this monitoring service that we'd want to do.
Right. And I think the way it exists right now, we hire the engineering firm, they pay for it. The firm that does the monitoring.
That's the way we used to do it, but we have changed that. We're trying to extricate ourselves from a lot of the legwork in that process and put that onus back on them. So that's, they've taken that on for this year.
And we'll see how that works.
Well, they're having a professional engineering firm do it, so.
Okay.
I think we'll be okay.
Thanks. Is it somebody we have a relationship with also that we are familiar with?
I'm not sure who they have decided to use at this point in time.
Okay. I just would like to be sure it's a reputable company.
Sure. Definitely. Yeah.
Okay. Right. I want to go back to, I'm looking at the letter that came from Prometheus in particular. Just saw it on my desk here tonight. And a point is made regarding that the count doesn't take into effect actual parking demand for the project. Anyway, in the second paragraph here, you'll notice some statements here, and I don't know if you've been able to read this letter, but I think that one of the things we're talking about is parking study to evaluate demand. Are we talking about actually speaking to the sum of the larger new projects who are actually going to be paying these fees and/or who are paying the fees, I guess, soon because they already have a project approved, about how this affects their ability to do business? Because it's mentioned here that we would actually have one of the highest net parking in lieu fees in the region, right? And this is, makes it difficult because we don't, we're not able to really examine it here right now, to command the much higher office rents, which allow it to pencil out for a developer. It might be an inhibitor to development in our downtown area if we don't do it right. So I'm interested in knowing, are we going to take and actually have some conversations with some of the big property owners that are pointing out some difficulties with this?
When we did the evaluation to make a recommendation on the amount of the parking in lieu fee, we, the amount that city council determined was the correct fee for San Mateo and prior direction was not the highest in the Bay Area. There were several jurisdictions that were still higher at that point. In terms of the request for parking demand to be utilized, I think that that, what I was seeing in some of the public comment letters was utilizing a parking demand study of similar projects to determine parking requirements in the downtown rather than having the ratios that we have at this time. So in doing the parking study to evaluate demand for the change of use projects and in looking at our overall parking requirements, if council directs staff to look into these, then doing parking demand rather than parking ratios may be something that would be evaluated in that study.
Because in, thank you for saying that, because I mean, in my way of thinking, that would be an empirical practice where you're actually looking at what's really happening and charging only for that. So, okay, I think that's good and I would like to ask my council members to consider that when we're making our recommendations here. I was curious, no, I think that's actually, those are actually all my questions for right now. Thank you very much.
So I just have one quick question. If you have a TDM and you don't comply with it and you're the third owner of the building, do you go back to that third owner and say, you're not? do you go back to that third owner and say, "You're not complying with it, so now we need a parking in Lufy"? How does that work? Or did you already address that, Eric? Because I was, it seems like it's a fluid situation.
But that's what we need, that's what we need to make sure, I mean, in my opinion, that's, that's the crux of it. It's like if, if we're letting them off the hook for not, for not providing parking, then we need to be able to find a way to make sure that they're back on the hook if it's, if it's, something's wrong. And, and I guess the response that I think that, that we got was, it's tricky, and they need to do more research, and we, we might be able to do something, but we need to look at it more. Is that...
I didn't mean to put you on the spot to answer that.
I appreciate that.
I thought that's what I heard earlier, but then after Councilmember Bonilla addressed it again, I was, got confused again, but I'm now clear. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions at this time, public comment, come on forward if you have a public comment slip. Anyone else want to make public comment? We have public comment slips up here, you can fill them out afterwards if you want. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pat Callahan from Prometheus. So I appreciate you bringing up the letter that we submitted along with two other developers in town. And I think the, there's two, where's, part of the math is, is the $50,000 per stall may or may not be the right number. Our big issue has been, from the get-go, has been tying the tie to the actual demand that we see from office tenants on our end, and the current zoning code is far in excess of that demand, and we end up paying the net balance at a rate of $50,000 per stall. So we would strongly recommend that any increase to the per stall should also go with a further study on the zoning code for downtown, so we aren't stuck in this spot where we have an antiquated zoning code for parking, and then get stuck paying a fee at $50,000 per stall for stalls that we don't really need. That's the crux of our letter and the other two letters. So we're open to the TDM measures, those are great ideas. Ongoing monitoring is a great idea. There's ways to look back on projects that they aren't meeting their TDM. We would ask for the opportunity to provide TDM measures that show that the demand is where we think it is, and if we're causing more demand for parking stalls than we build, we're open to ways to solve for that in the future. I think all of these need to be considered along with the increase to, just the overnight increase to $50,000 per stall. That's our, I think the gist of the letter we wrote and the gist of letters from Wendy Hill and Lane Partners, who are also active developers in downtown.
Thank you very much. Speaking of Lane Partners.
Speaker is Marcus Gilmore.
Thank you for the time tonight. To echo what the gentleman from Prometheus said, so a couple of things, we, we recommend the TDM measures to actually see what the demand is, and then apply a parking ratio to what the actual demand is. An example is our project, the old Aaron Brothers site on Third and Ellsworth, that was entitled in November. The parking study that the city went through to entitle our project showed a demand of 1.94 per thousand as the actual demand for parking, but we're required to pay at a 2.6. And that's before the TDM measures are even implemented, and there's another 25% trip reduction on top of that. So our actual parking demand will be closer to one and a half, just as an example. So just wanted to echo what Mr., the gentleman from Prometheus said, and one idea I had is, does it make sense to put all of this in the general plan update? New parking ratios and some of these other recommendations in the general plan update? Give everyone more time to think about it, sit down with developers like us, and then package it all into the general plan update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. How many square feet is the Aaron Brothers project?
30,000, roughly 30,000 square feet.
So what does that equate to? An extra $2 million? Pretty close?
Yes.
Okay. Just ballparking. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
If, if I may, any more public comment?
I'm going to close the public comment period unless there's anybody else. Bring it back to the council for any questions or comments.
So when we talked about 50,000 a square foot, I mean, 50,000 a parking spot, we had been under for quite some time as to what an average stall costs. Is that right? I mean, there was a whole economic analysis before we came up with that number.
That's correct, and when the parking in Lufy was increased in 2015, and there was the three-year plan put into place, and there was a decision at that time by the council to have the parking in Lufy be about half of what a parking stall costs, so there was a subsidy being done for quite a long time.
Okay. Okay. I mean, if you want to know my opinion, I'm okay with these, I, I don't buy that San Mateo is that much less per square foot, but that's okay. But let's, I, I'm okay with these studies. I do caution that TDM is a fluid situation as it relates to a particular building, and your leverage is upfront when the building is constructed. But I am sensitive to the impact on the ability to develop a site, especially your site is very small. So I'm, I'm willing to take a look at, at the studies, but I'm keeping in mind that TDM, it doesn't solve all problems for eternity. How's that?
Perfect. Let's see.
I am also in favor of all of the suggested decision points, and I would echo what, what Councilmember Bonilla, Bonilla's point about really folding in the study of parking demand into the process, and, and making sure that we're streamlining our processes and not creating unnecessary financial burdens to development.
Sounds good. Anybody else?
Yep.
Yes. Eric, go ahead. You started.
So the two, two very important things, the high-level things of this whole discussion for me is trying to accurately get to the cost of a parking spot, and we've kind of addressed that, I think, in our last conversation. And then the, the, the second part of it is making sure that, that new developments are paying for the actual demand, the parking spots that are created from that new development, making sure that they're paying for it, and that cost is not getting shifted to, to taxpayers. So I support all, all of these studies, and, and I, I support potential parking reduction TDM measures. It's just making sure that what we come up with is going to be getting as close as we can to that number. And, and that, I, I don't think any of our, our developer partners want to pay for more than they're, than they're generating, and, and we want to make sure that they're not paying for less, and so let's try to get to the closest, closest number that we can so it's fair for all, for all parties involved.
Well said.
Okay. I just want to...
How could you possibly add to that, Rick?
Easily. But thank you, Eric, for my comments. Thank you very much. Yes. So I want to mention something right now. You know, our, our projected cost for construction of a parking space right now is very, based on a very high cost of construction time, right? So right now, demand is very high. It's hard to even find a contractor to give you a price on construction for a new parking structure, let alone, you know, that's not through the roof, because I know that estimates are coming in very high for these kind of projects. So my thinking is, you know, it sounds like we're trying to change the fee and then do the study and justify it, and I just, I'm not sure that that's the way to do it. Am I incorrect? I mean, the Nexus study is how you justify the, the number, isn't that correct?
I, I think that we're, we're comfortable with the 50,000 per space.
For now, or...
Well, the, the issue is, is charging a different rate for the change of use, and so the study is going to be more a function of our parking requirements, not so much the, the cost per space. So that's why we're recommending that we go ahead and up the fee now, and because of the, the 10-space credit, we don't believe there'll be a major impact on change of use, while we then study a larger change, or a larger consideration of a change to our overall parking standards.
Okay. I get the, the 10-unit base for the change of use, and I think that's a good thing. But I guess actually if the council were to raise this now to the level we're considering, we could always reconsider later if the market drops and, and, and it's too much.
Certainly.
Okay. That's what I'd like to recommend, is we'll leave some flexibility for that. And, okay, other than that, I think, I am definitely in study of the fee and Nexus, in favor of the fee and Nexus study for potential updates to the zoning code, because I don't think we're going to see, you know, the, the general plan update process is probably going to take a couple more years, okay? And I think that by the time we get there, we'll have some better idea of what we're talking about. The parking study to evaluate demand, yes, for conversion to different use, and potential parking reduction for TDM measures, I think so too. I think if, if we are able to put in place good TDM measures, working with a developer based on a number of factors, their location from transit and so forth, they should be able to get some credit for that. Thanks.
Excellent. I would just want to commend our, our partners downtown, the businesses that are building. You came in, I, I hear what you're asking for, you're asking for something reasonable, you're not complaining so much about us increasing the price, just making sure that it's accurate to the number of spaces that, that are required. Reasonable request, and I think we're trying to work with you. Do you have everything you need from us?
No, I don't think so. What I, what I, what I heard is about the studies, that everyone seems to be in favor of doing the studies, but I did not hear about the $50,000, because we were going to bring that back to you at the next meeting, so I just want to make sure everybody's wanting us to bring that back for that increase. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Never hesitate to give us a call. With that, I'm going to move on to the next item that is also Sue Ellen.
Hi, Sue Ellen Atkinson with Public Works here also on the SB 743 project review and introduction, and I have with me Damian Stefanakis from Kittleson &amp; Associates. He's a principal planner who is working with the city on helping us comply with the requirements of SB 743.
How did you pronounce that? Diane, could you tell me how you pronounce it? Stefanakis, is that who you said?
Did I say it wrong?
Damian Stefanakis.
Thank you very much.
A N, not a P H.
Just be glad that you no longer have to say Papandracopoulos. It's only five letters opposed to 16.
Thank you.
Well, we digress.
Phonetic.
Phonetic, yes.
All right. So our objectives for this presentation is to explain vehicle miles traveled and the difference between VMT and level of service, which is LOS, and to explain how using VMT as a metric for transportation analysis will affect future development project approval in San Mateo, and that is how it will affect under CEQA, and how it will integrate with the city's general plan and policies, and then to discuss the thresholds for VMT that are used in CEQA, which is California Environmental Quality Act, to define impacts. So now that we've talked about SB 743, what is it? SB 743 is Senate Bill 743 that was signed into law in September 2013, and the intent of this legislation was to more appropriately align transportation analysis under CEQA with the goals of the state for greenhouse gas emissions reductions and increasing use of active transportation. SB 743 made changes to the guidelines for transportation analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, and the primary purpose is to reduce emissions through trip reduction. So the effects of SB 743 being signed into law is that essentially previously, level of service was used to measure transportation impact under CEQA, and level of service looks at localized intersections and roadways right near a project, so adjacent to a project or on approach to a project, and it looked at the amount of delay that you'll experience in your vehicle at those locations as a result of the project being built, or as a result of the project not being built also. So rather than utilizing automobile delay and congestion at specific points, SB 743 eliminates LOS as the metric to assess transportation impacts and moves toward total travel under vehicle miles traveled to more closely align with emissions reduction efforts. So under SB 743, the recommended metric for assessing transportation impact of new projects is vehicle miles traveled, which encourages more transit use, more walking and biking, shorter trips between land uses, and in doing so, it promotes infill development to make use of existing multimodal networks. So what is vehicle miles traveled? It's the daily, total daily miles that are driven by vehicles, so to and from land uses, between land uses, and it's measured per capita, so per person. So in a three-person household, for example, if one person commutes 50 miles round trip to and from San Francisco, the second person has a seven-mile commute from home to school, stopping at the grocery store, getting gas, and going back home, and the third person walks home from school, you would calculate the total number of vehicles traveled for the household, and then divide by three people in that household. So that household VMT would be 19 VMT per capita. And the important thing that really distinguishes VMT is it counts travel inside and outside of the jurisdiction. LOS looks right near a project, and VMT acknowledges that boundaries don't really matter as much when you're looking at transportation impacts. So in adopting SB 743, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, or OPR, published a technical advisory in 2018, December 2018, that helps jurisdictions and transit agencies and the state figure out how to implement this new legislation. So there are recommended thresholds that we'll go into more later on in this presentation. It requires each jurisdiction to establish new criteria for what constitutes a significant transportation impact in evaluating under CEQA, and we are required to become compliant with SB 743 by July 1st, 2020, which is not that far from, from right now. So our responsibility as a city, the city reviews projects to identify any adverse environmental impacts, so in doing CEQA analysis for noise, for pollution, for transportation, et cetera. Under SB 743, we have to update our traffic impact guidelines for review under CEQA only to utilize VMT as our metric. The city can select our own thresholds for how far under the average per cap, average VMT per capita we want to be, but if we differ from what OPR has advised, we do have to make sure that our differences are defensible. Under level of service, if there is a significant impact from a project, you'll typically see infrastructure projects as mitigation, so widening a roadway, installing signals, doing new signalization or new signal timing. That's usually what a project will be required to do if there are significant impacts when measuring with level of service. Under VMT, transportation demand management measures are typically the mitigations, so measures that reduce single occupancy vehicle trips, and as a result, reduce vehicle miles traveled. The city will also identify when vehicle delay currently measured as LOS will still be used for non-CEQA purposes or to assess certain project access or impacts. So as we know, the city is currently undertaking the general plan update led by our colleagues in the Community Development Department. Public Works is coordinating with CDD on this policy update, and any integration... Public Works is coordinating with CDD on this policy update and any integration that's needed to align this new VMT policy and the current and future general plan. So this VMT policy will affect the new circulation element of the updated general plan, and we'll be working with CDD and the City Attorney's Office to evaluate how our current general plan may be affected by the requirements of SB 743. Important to note is that our current general plan identifies level of service as our metric for transportation impact, and SB 743 essentially says that's fine. The general plan can still maintain LOS as long as the city adopts, excuse me, a guideline utilizing VMT for analysis under CEQA. The city's Climate Action Plan 2020, which I believe is on its way to you shortly, also is key in our city's efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and that also ties into this VMT policy effort. So now I will turn it over to Damian for the remainder of the presentation.
Thanks, Sue Ellen. Again, Damian Stefanakis, Principal Planner with Kittleson Associates. The subject is so complex that it requires us to tag-team it. So what are the VMT impact thresholds that would be developed? And again, this is all new stuff to a lot of jurisdictions. I think everyone's still trying to figure it out. Everyone has jumped on this pretty late, waiting for OPR to get all their guidelines ready, and the deadline from the Senate bill is looming, so a lot of jurisdictions are finally jumping on this right now, including San Mateo, which is getting involved to develop these thresholds, and Kittleson's going to be supporting city staff with that endeavor. Now, the key OPR guidance for VMT thresholds is, as we mentioned, VMT is the appropriate metric. Residential projects are going to be measured on a VMT per capita basis with the goal of a 15% reduction below existing regional levels. And a lot of that was tied to the greenhouse gas emission mandates to reduce greenhouse gases by 15% by a certain date, so hence the OPR's recommendation of 15% below existing. And the regional is the key, what defines the region, and they've given us discretion on what the actual region that San Mateo can use to adopt, but I'll move forward and discuss that later. Office projects would be VMT per employee, again with a goal of 15% reduction. They recognize that retail projects are replaceable and within the community, so they don't require a 15% below, but just a mere look at whether total VMT increases when you add the retail. Sometimes VMT may go down because you're putting it in a local area and it's serving the closer community, so the trips length may reduce. As Sue Ellen mentioned, lead agencies can ultimately have discretion to set these standards, so we'll be looking into that. Next slide. There will also be some screening criteria, so you're not reviewing every single application that comes in front of the city. City's already probably doing that under the city TRA guidelines, but some projects just may not require a VMT impact analysis. For land use projects, OPR recommends smaller projects, less than 100 daily trips would be screened out, so they wouldn't have to do a VMT analysis. Again, this is all for CEQA. So smaller projects, 100 trips per day, it's about approximately 10 trips in the peak hour. Proximity to transit, if a project is within half a mile of transit, and then we could use map-based screening where we could look at density and mixes of uses that have similarities to the surrounding areas, there's the synergy, so those could be screened out. And then, of course, locally serve in retail, and the city would decide what the size of that locally serve in retail is, is it 50,000 square feet or whatever? And then provision for affordable housing. So some of those are the recommendations from OPR. And then there's also transportation projects. They have to undergo VMT as well per CEQA. You could screen those out exempt if they're transit or bike-ped infrastructure-type projects, so you wouldn't have to do a CEQA analysis for those. At least for the traffic side of it, there are the other chapters of CEQA. Next slide. So we would establish an implementation approach to this SB 743. So for land use projects, VMT would be estimated using a travel demand model, and then we would develop these VMT impact thresholds, and they could be similar to the recommendations from OPR, but each city can have the discretion of what those thresholds will be. And again, I mentioned, what is the region that you're going to compare to? Is it going to be the entire Bay Area? Is it going to be the county? Or is it going to be the city? And then city can decide on what those thresholds are for various types of land uses. OPR doesn't talk about other land uses besides residential, retail, and office. Those are the key drivers of VMT. So they don't talk about industrial, they don't talk about schools. Schools are usually locally serving, but we do know they generate a lot of trips, mostly local. And then which projects would be exempt from VMT and why? That would go into your implementation. And now for transportation projects, we'd also use the travel demand model to estimate the change in VMT. And then with transportation projects, you've got to consider induced demand because a new capacity does induce a certain level of additional traffic. The VMT calculation, again, I mentioned it's done using a travel demand model. Here's two examples with the map on the left with the MTC regional model. We mapped out all the VMT per capita, color-coded by a small geographic space. Here we've used Census Track or TAZ Traffic Analysis Zone, which is what travel demands and models are usually split into, and the colors depict the high versus low VMT per capitas. As you can guess, the higher VMTs are usually going to be in the suburban cities, they're at a disadvantage actually, or in the hills where travel is going to be longer distance. And the lower VMTs are going to be in urbanized areas, closer to transit, so the colors are green would be a lower VMT. On the right, we have a map showing the VMTs using the CCAG, the countywide model, or the city model, with a smaller geographic space so we can get a better estimate of the VMT per capita for the geographic areas more pertinent to the city of San Mateo. As we mentioned, VMT now will be mitigated through TDM, you can't mitigate it by adding roadway capacity, so our old friend TDM comes back into the discussion. If there is an impact, then the applicant would use TDM measures to demonstrate that they could reduce the trips with a trip reduction, they would encourage alternative travel modes, and we would build tools to streamline this process for estimating the TDM. I've got two examples there of some tools, and a lot of jurisdictions have been very helpful in sharing the tools, so folks aren't reinventing the wheels, particularly VTA, San Jose, and San Diego have been at the forefront of developing these tools where you type in the number of trips a project is estimated to generate. You determine what all the TDM measures that are appropriate for it, you have percentage of trip reductions based on CapCO estimates. Don't ask me what that means. It's California Air Pollution Control Officers Association. Sometimes it's not as very accurate, but you would get a TDM trip reduction, and I do preface that it may require mitigation monitoring. Some jurisdictions are already doing this, so they have been implementing TDM and VMT with trip reduction and trip monitoring on an annual basis to make sure that this is reasonable. Next slide. So key differences moving forward. What does this mean for the city, for the city council, and for the residents? Well, the hope is that the process, the SB 743 VMT process, is going to be more streamlined in terms of your developments. That's the hope for this, for traffic, at least for traffic analysis under CEQA. Traffic has generally or consistently been a burden on the CEQA process because the study area definition could be large for a smaller project, and it usually doesn't benefit infill projects because you start getting these localized impacts for infill projects which then get challenged and don't move forward. So we should be able to see more infill projects being screened out for VMT and out-of-traffic analysis based on SB 743. But of course, residents' concerns are still going to be addressed, just as a non-CEQA item. An example is how we've been doing parking, it's always been a non-CEQA item, so traffic and level of service and delay would become a non-CEQA item in your studies. Now, city council will see both, likely will see both VMT and LOS, a blend of those in your guidelines that the developers' community will follow. And roadway improvements are now going to be tied more to a transportation impact fee nexus rather than individual projects implementing roadway improvements where sometimes the city and the developer just doesn't have the ability to widen anymore, especially in urbanized areas where it may not be necessary and you may have secondary impacts associated with those widens. So local improvements are going to still be included but as conditions of approval, and that'll be more around access to these types of projects. So where are we now? We just kicked off in January helping the city with this process. Some jurisdictions have already jumped on this and have already implemented VMTs, particularly San Francisco and Oakland, but those are very urbanized cities with high-capacity transit accessibility to most of their residents, so they've jumped on it because it benefits them to have the VMT implement. So we've just kicked off the process, we're going to be finalizing the approach to SB 743 very soon. We're going to be developing metrics and thresholds, we're going to be using the citywide travel demand model that is being built at the moment to develop VMT maps that will show the VMT per capita and VMT per employee, and we'll also develop the other tools necessary for TDM. So we're going to prepare the SB 743 Transportation Impact Guidelines. That's what the city's going to put in place before July 1, 2020. And this should achieve a consensus on the information in these guidelines and the level of detail. So there'll be a lot of research done over the next five months between us and city staff, and we plan to include city's approach to level of service as part of those guidelines. We're going to initiate TDM and VMT estimating tools, and again, I mentioned earlier that we may build off some tools developed by others like San Diego VTA, and we're going to conduct the research necessary to do these appropriate TDM measures for the city. There will also be community outreach and education, which Sue Ellen could touch on. And then Sue Ellen can talk about the timeline.
All right. So July is not far from now, so we're on a very quick timeline from here on out. So this month, we are here at city council tonight presenting the background information on this. We will be presenting similar information to Planning Commission next week at a study session. In March through May, as Damian mentioned, we will be busy determining the thresholds, metrics, et cetera, that the city needs to determine as part of this new policy and conducting community education around this for the development community as well as for residents, because this will significantly change things as far as development projects go in what developers are doing and what community members are hearing. Right now, we are planning on Planning Commission study session in May and an informational item at the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission at the same time, and then we'll be back before you in June with the draft policy, all of the work to date for adoption of that new VMT policy so that as of July 1, we can be compliant with the requirements of SB 743. So with that concludes staff presentation, and we're available for questions.
Just one quick question. It's not required within a half a mile of transit. How is transit defined? Is it mass transit? Is it a bus line? Is it being next to a freeway?
There's guidance in the OPR guidelines where I'm going to get the term wrong. Major transit such as regional rail like Caltrain is within one-half mile of a major transit stop like Caltrain would be screened out. There's a similar item available for high-quality transit service, which has a certain amount of time between stops, so a bus service that has buses come every 15 minutes or less, that's considered high-quality transit. So stops that have that type of service would also be screened out within that half-mile radius.
Question?
Oh, go ahead. Councilmember Lee has a question first?
It's always going to be ladies first this year. Unless we say you go ahead. No, I'm kidding. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. It's at the pleasure of the mayor, we do know that.
I'm curious about the decision point to keep the level of service as an indicator at all or a metric. Is that a foregone conclusion that we will find, we will continue to use that metric? Or the part of the analysis is questioning its use at all in continuation?
I can answer that. I can find the button.
You're on.
So level of service just can't be used for CEQA.
Right.
But it can still be retained as part of your guidelines for your non-CEQA analysis. So they should reside side by side, VMT and level of service slash delay, but you just can't use it for CEQA.
And note that the current general plan maintains LOS as a defined metric, so while we will be working with CDD and the City Attorney's Office to determine if any updates are necessary, at this point, being compliant with the city's general plan means doing LOS analysis in addition to the required VMT analysis under CEQA.
Okay. And then, this is sort of related, but not totally, but it raises, to me, it raises the question of the role of TMAs in general and sort of where we are going in that direction. And I'm wondering, is that a second part of where we're headed with this analysis is potentially looking at the boundaries of TMA, the organizing structures, the monitoring component that we were discussing earlier?
And that would be separate from this item. This is how transportation analysis is done when you're doing a CEQA analysis for a project, and the organization and structure and how a TMA operates within any given area, that 's more of a legal organization and definition that is separate from an analysis of impact under CEQA.
Thank you.
Eric, do you have any questions?
Yes, I did. So, you know, my experience has been with level of service, and that, to me, is pretty straightforward in how that works. How accurate are the models for VTM, or vehicle miles traveled, in terms of, like, when you put in that first example of the person going to get milk, the person going to San Francisco, how do you determine, how do you make that determination on who those people are?
That's a good question. So the way the VMT is computed is through the travel demand model, which estimates the travel time and the distance from an origin to a destination. So the origin could be the household side, the residential side, destination would be the employment side, San Francisco could be, and so it determines the path that someone's going to take, and then it computes that length of that path, and how many vehicles from that traffic analysis zone in San Mateo to that destination. So that would compute the VMT, vehicle miles traveled. So it's the metric, vehicles times miles, distance, and then it gets divided by the per capita.
Right, but...
The accuracy is dependent on the travel demand model, which was calibrated based on the survey data, and most travel demand models in the Bay Area are based on the MTC regional models calibration and then fine-tuned for each county or district or city.
So do you feel that they're relatively accurate?
So the models are as accurate as the inputs.
The input's accurate?
The inputs are as accurate as the traffic counts that we get or the survey data that we get, and we know that there's... So the models are as accurate as the inputs.
Inputs accurate?
The inputs are as accurate as the traffic counts that we get or the survey data that we get. And we know that there's, the traffic counts vary by five to 10% on a daily basis, so there is some variation. But the travel path is relatively accurate, because we know the distance from San Mateo to San Francisco. It's just a question of the origin destination distributions.
But how do you know if somebody travels to San Francisco or to Redwood City or walks to work in San Mateo?
Because the travel demand model is calibrated to survey data, so we know how many people are going from origin A to destination B. And so you extrapolate that out to the entire Bay Area and population, and it's as accurate as our prediction, because remember, we're forecasting this out into the future. But VMT is done on an existing basis. So it's the existing model, which is what represents what we see. So it's as accurate as what our observations are, and our data, of course.
And that traffic model is currently, we'll be using that, we are currently using that for the general plan update. We utilize that to analyze under LOS. So it's the, in the by-county model, it's what jurisdictions in San Mateo County and Santa Clara County are utilizing. So the information has been honed and is counted on by various, all jurisdictions within the Bay Area.
Rick?
So, question, I was looking at the bottom of Slide nine. I think there was a note there about retail, and it set my mind on to thinking about a lot of other things. Clearly, the whole point of VMT is to work to reduce VMTs with several different goals, I think, but reduce greenhouse gas emissions, co-locate work and job sites, if you will, the whole jobs and housing fit, which is being discussed now. And along those same lines, if we're able to complete these things, we improve the quality of people's lives and health. But I was also thinking about retail products, which come from far overseas and are causing a whole lot of GHG emissions. And I know that, this has come up before. I remember there was a SEQA discussion on another project here in the city. And is there any way of accounting for all of that emission? It seems that nobody's really taking that into account. And so I'm wondering what your thoughts are on that, because it affects us here.
And I think you're right, that's transportation, but it's a different type of transportation. So this VMT says, this SB 743 VMT legislation isn't addressing that.
It's what? Frame this up.
You're saying it's not addressing that, because this is strictly just a regulation that we have to comply with?
Right. This legislation is addressing the trips to and from Bay Area origins destinations.
So maybe from a warehouse in Tracy--
Exactly.
To the Macy's store.
Right. Because there is still the distribution. The products may be made somewhere else and shipped, and that does create a lot of GHG, global GHG.
Ships, you name it, everything.
Exactly. But the local distribution is reflected in our travel demand models, because we do have a truck-trip component in the demand models. So that does account for the truck-trip VMTs on a PCE basis. And that does account for those type of trips that you mentioned, which is the distribution trips in addition to the retail-type trips of us going to the stores.
Right. But that's not the compliance that's being called for by this legislation?
No, specifically, specifically the retail that you mentioned isn't, it's more the home-based shop trip component of retail.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
What is the data collected from cellphones that tracks people's travel? What is that called?
There's two. There's Streetlight and Air Sage.
Streetlight was the one I was trying to think of.
Yeah, mobile source data, yes.
Do people do studies tracking Streetlight and comparing it to our models to verify the accuracy?
That's a great question.
Well, thank you. I've been waiting all night.
Good job, John.
It's a very astute question. City, in our proposal to the city of San Mateo, we haven't put in a task to verify the travel demand model using observed data like Streetlight. But in another jurisdiction we're doing, the city of Dublin, we're building the model for them there. In the case of San Mateo, we're not building the model, somebody else is. But in Dublin, we're actually building their model for them, and we've put in a task there to obtain Streetlight data, which is mobile source type data, and verify some of the trip distribution patterns. And you both asked questions about how accurate those are.
Eric would feel much more comfortable if he could verify--
But recognizing that it's a sample, but it's at least a snapshot of a day or a couple of days' activity of travel verified against the travel in the travel demand model, and then adjusted to Streetlight, if necessary, to give us a higher level of confidence.
Great. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Any final comments?
I just want to say I support this. Thanks. Good stuff. Good work.
Yeah, I'll just say I support it as well. I think this is a great new direction. But I also am, I'm actually very encouraged that we are going to still keep level of service, just to give us that other view, because one of our goals also, besides our huge environmental goals, is to reduce traffic congestion and to make sure that we're knowing what we're doing. So I personally appreciate the fact that we're going to be looking at both.
Girls think it's a good first, isn't it?
I agree. Ditto. This is very exciting. I can also see the value in keeping the LOS side by side. And I really do like the idea of validating it with any mobile technology and data we have. So if we can get there, too, that would be all the better.
I have liked VMT for a long time, because it points out the unique challenge that we have, which is people with longer and longer commutes. So pointing that out and using it as a data point, moving forward, if we're able to shorten people's commutes by getting them closer to where they work and closer to public transit, then we will have succeeded and we'll get to prove that in the numbers. I look forward to being able to do that. Thank you very much for this presentation. Do you need anything else from us? Fantastic.
I think next time, we should have the presentation in Greek.
Yes, yes.
Maybe only one of us will understand it.
If I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, so that's it? I'm going to close all the presentations. We're done with that. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is reports and announcements.
I have an announcement.
Yes?
I was just informed that the neighborhood of north-central San Mateo was selected as an area of community investment by the San Francisco Foundation.
That's fantastic.
Good. Congratulations.
Three hundred thousand.
Nice.
Directly to the-- Where does the money go?
So the way it works is that the San Francisco Foundation cosign program will select 12 to 15 fellows that will go through a five-year fellowship program and work together as a cohort to identify a specific community need that they want to address. And then the foundation will fund the seed money at $300,000 towards that idea.
Another 300? They'll pick one, they'll fund to the tune of 300?
Yes.
Well, take it. Excellent. Good news.
Yes, that's fantastic news. Sean, anything for the good of the order? Haven't you spoken enough already, Sam? Okay. Thank you, Brad. Anything, Diane?
I always have things. I just think of them when I get home. In the interest of brevity, I'm done.
Nothing, Kathy? Rick? What do you want to announce?
No, I took enough time up last meeting.
Are you sure? PCE, anything? Just kidding.
What? Any vacations coming up?
I'm good. I'm good, thanks.
Okay, I have one. Give me just a second. We have all received A Dove Among Eagles. We all received A Dove Among Eagles, Lynda Patterson's book. I'm here to tell you how important this is. I finished reading it last night. I have had the privilege to get to know Lynda and Steve. They came, they asked us for a little bit of money so that we could finish the memorial at Fort Campbell in Kentucky or Tennessee, depending on what side of the base you're on. I had the privilege of going with them there. I had the privilege of getting to talk to them when they were here. And this book is her. It is a love story between her and her brother, a love story between her and Steve, who she met in Vietnam when she went over after her brother died. It is a love story to San Mateo. It is an incredible, just pick it up, read it, you're going to finish it almost immediately. This should be mandatory reading for all San Mateo residents. It is part of our origin story. It is part of who we are and how the soul of San Mateo developed. It is that important for everyone to read. It will make you very proud to be a San Mateo resident and a pitch. She is coming on March 20th? 21st. She will be here on the 20th. We'll see, we will get to greet her and welcome her at City Hall on the 20th. On the 21st is her event where she will be signing copies of this book at the library, at the wall, our wall, at 6:00 PM in the library. Oh, and the band. The 101st Band is coming out, so we will again get to host our troops, and it is just fantastic. I, when I finished the book last night, I just had to sit there, and I had that same feeling that I had at Fort Campbell with Patrice, which is, we just should be talking about this every single council meeting, every single day. We should be teaching the history of San Mateo to every resident, because we should be more proud of how unique we are and how special this relationship is with the Eagles, our Eagles. So read it, get to know it, pass it along. It's the best. It is the best. If there's nothing else, our meeting is adjourned. Oh, wait. Yeah. That's what I meant. What I meant was, we're going into the closed session, after which we will report out and adjourn.